Once again, I'd like to thank the Southern California Edison for sponsoring this forum. And I'd like to introduce you again to Christian Nelson.
Okay. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Our candidates for city council. Thank you for participating in this forum sponsored by the Ranch Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce in Southern California Edison. The format for this evening will be as follows, and there are some changes because there are so many more of you. We will have 90-second candidate introduction of personal background prior to the questions and answers. There will be an individual in front of the candidate's stage with a 1 minute 30 and 50-second card and a stop card. Please adhere to the time allotted as this forum is being taped for broadcast. All the candidates who have filed for office have been invited to this forum. Proper decorum will be expected and outbursts, of course, will not be tolerated. Candidates have randomly drawn their seating positions, and we will begin in order to my left, alternating down the line as each question comes up. The questions and the answer segment, all questions have been received from Ranch Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce members. The first question will be given to all of the candidates for city council. This question is chosen by our chamber members, and this particular question was not given to the candidates in advance. The following questions will be randomly drawn, and each candidate will have two minutes to reply. A rebuttal may take, may replace the next, the next question by, by the next candidate. Each candidate will answer three questions. After all candidates have had an opportunity to address the questions, we will then return for closing remarks, in which a drawing of names will establish the order of the closing remarks. Candidates have two minutes each. During this segment, there will be two time car checks, a 30-second and a 50-second, 15-second, excuse me, and a stop. We ask that each candidate adhere to the time allotment. We will begin with candidate number one, your 90-second intro. Mr. Spagnolo.
Thank you, Christian. I want to thank the chamber for hosting the event. I think it's like a third or fourth year we've been here.
Are we on now? There we go. Okay, thank you very much.
Let's restart our clock.
I'll thank the chamber again for putting on the event. Good evening. My name is Sam Spagnolo. I'm a resident of the city of Ranch Cucamonga since 1971. When I moved here, the big traffic problem was sheep crossing the road. We didn't have to have synchronized lights. I saw a need for a community that was in dire need of, of fire protection. At that time, it was all volunteers, and I joined the volunteer fire department, and eventually came on and put in 30 years of dedicated service. I raised my family here. I've been married to my wife for 49 years. We just celebrated our 49th anniversary in September. I have three children, seven grandchildren, and they, all three of my children, utilize the school districts in the city of Ranch Cucamonga, which has been very good. I saw the opportunity to continue my career in, in the community involvement. As my firefighter career, I was able at that time to initiate a lot of programs and get involved with the community, and after I retired, I saw that need as a city councilman. So I've been on for eight years, and I thank you very much for voting for me.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sarah Jimenez, and I want to thank, thank the chamber for hosting this and everybody who came out here tonight. Like I said, my name is Sarah Jimenez. I was raised in this community, all the way from Bergo elementary, if anybody knows where that's at. It's down on Arrow and Vineyard, all the way to Chaffey College. I've lived here for over 25 years. I'm 34 now, so you guys, you know, pretty much know that I'm product of Ranch Cucamonga. I love this community so much, to the point that I am now engaged to my fiance, Juana, and I convinced her to move from San Gavro Valley into Ranch Cucamonga because I couldn't think of any other place where I wanted to buy a house and raise my family. A lot of you guys know me because I've been a local FedEx driver for the last 12 years. That's what I've been doing, securing an income. And I decided to run for city council because I believe that the blue collar, we saw our previous candidates talk about jobs and creation of jobs. Well, nobody understands that like the working guy, and I think the voice was lacking at the city council, and that's why I decided to run for city council. Thank you. And I'm, give you 30 minutes, 30 seconds.
Sorry. Mr. Steinhardt, you do have your 90-second intro. They don't roll over.
Is that like cellphone?
I'll take his roll-over minutes, no problem. Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Hi, my name is Mark Steinhardt. I have been a resident of Ranch Cucamonga since 2001. I'm here but with my wife and my lovely daughter Madison, who has been doing her homework during the last debates, which is good for her. We want to thank the chamber for having this event, and I'm very privileged to be here to be able to stand in front of you and ask for your, your vote and your support. I am a business owner. I, I am a member of the chamber. I've been a business owner for 15 years. I graduated from University of California Riverside with a degree in political science with honors. I am a military brat, so I've lived all over the world. I've lived in Hawaii, I've lived in Germany, I've lived in Illinois and DC. You name the state, I've probably lived there. My father was stationed there. Out of all the places that I had to choose to raise my family, to buy a home, and to be able to retire ultimately, is Ranch Cucamonga. And as a business owner, I see the need. I see the need on the council. I, I really love this city. I want to say that I won't say anything negative about this city. I won't come up here and say that things this way are bad or that way are bad, because you know what? This city is where it is, and we're here because of the way that we brought it. But one thing that we haven't considered is where's the next generation? We need to start looking for that next generation of city leaders and start getting ready to pass the torch. And with that said, I thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Mr. Rice, your 90-second intro.
Hi, everybody. My name is Anthony Rice. I grew up mostly in this city, and I've lived here for nearly 20 years. I'm 28-years-old, and I've been happily married for three and a half years to my high school sweetheart, Jenny Rice, who's proudly here tonight. I consider her my high school sweetheart because I had a crush on her throughout high school, but I'm not necessarily her high school sweetheart. I don't think I was cool enough yet to be with her in high school. But finally, we officially got together when I turned home from studying abroad in Madrid, Spain, for a year immediately after high school. And we've been, been together over nine years. We have an 18-month-old son named Elijah, and he compels me to further my fight for liberty in local politics. I'm a local small business owner of Grow Organic and part-time sales consultant at CarMax. First of all, I just wanted to thank everyone who showed up tonight and for the sponsor of, of this event. I'm honored to be here tonight. It's important that people be involved in local politics and know what's going on. I seriously think it's even more important than focusing on even the presidential election, since politics, local politics affects us more directly. Everybody knows who the president is, but I think more people should know who their local representatives are, and I want to see that change because it's local politics that heavily influence people's lives. Many people ask me why I'm crazy enough to run for city council, and I tell them, first of all, I care deeply about the future of the city for future generations, including that of my 18-month-old son. Secondly, I've been a political activist for almost five years, and my experience has gotten me to the point where I believe it's time we need drastic change.
And I'm sorry, I have to interrupt you.
As your councilman, I will find your [inaudible].
Mr. Rice, please stop.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we do need to keep to the time allotted, and in order to be fair to all, I will interrupt every single one of them. Mr. Bouquet, your 90-second intro.
Good evening. Can you hear this? Is this on? All right, very good. My name is Chuck Bouquet. While some of you may know me, many of you may not due to your busy family and work schedule commitments in our, in this fine city. My, it's a case of where I'm proud to say that I have called Ranch Cucamonga, Ranch Cucamonga my home for over 56 years. I've been married to my wife Suzanne for 24 years and have one grown son, Charlie. In fact, Suzanne and I just celebrated our 24th wedding anniversary this last month as well. Not as many years as my friend Sam, but we're, we're trying to catch up with him. I'm an 18-year small business owner here in town, a former 16-year reserve deputy sheriff, and have been back on the Ranch Cucamonga City Council these last two years. And I proudly served on the Ranch Cucamonga City Council from 1982 through 1994. I'm also appreciative of the chamber hosting this forum here. I'm appreciative of the chamber hosting this forum here. This is a pretty heavy weight to sit here and shove in front of your face. And I served on the board of directors for the Ranch Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce for seven years, and I was also president of the Ranch Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce for one year in 1999 to 2000. And I thank you for your time here this evening. I've been committed to making a better Ranch Cucamonga for over 30 years, and with your vote, I'm not done yet. Thank you.
I know each pair of you is sharing a mic, but as best as you are able, please make sure that when you're speaking that, that the microphone is directly in front of you so that we get the best sound and everybody's able to hear you. So, Mr. Moffett, your, thanks.
Good evening, everyone here, and I want to thank you, and I want to thank the chamber for showing up to hear the candidates. I have been a resident of Ranch Cucamonga for 40 years. We moved here in August of 1972, and when we moved here, as you have heard, that there were sheep on the hillside, and there was nothing but grape arbors and a few avocado farms. It became our home. I raised my kids here. They went to Altaloma High School. My grandchildren are going to Deer Creek right now, and it's a pleasure to live in Ranch Cucamonga. I could live anywhere in the world, but I choose Ranch Cucamonga. And today, I am running for the city council because I feel we need a change. We have had a lot of issues in the city council, a lot of things have taken place, and we have some young people here along that will be good councilmen, and I think we should make a change come November 6th. So, thank you very much.
Our first question is going to be asked of all of the candidates for city council. We're going to begin with Mr. Jimenez, and then go down the line, and end with Mr. Spagnolo. This first question comes from the chamber members, and is, "How would you, as a city council member, work to improve its services and processes to new and existing businesses in our city?" If you need me to repeat the question, then feel free to tell me.
That's fine.
And you have two minutes to respond.
So, like I said, my job is to drive around and talk to business owners. That's what I do all day long. Some people are glad to see me when they have their delivery. Some people are not so glad to see me because it just worked for them. And they're like, "Oh, my God, I have to get to work now. You're here." One of the biggest complaints that I hear from business owners, it is that when it comes to, either when they were opening a business or expanding and they need to get permits and licenses, that it's too complicated, that it takes too long, that the fees are outrageous. I recently knew a contractor who was a truck driver, and he was running his business out of his house. He didn't know he had to actually get a business license to run an out-of-state truck out of his house in Ranch Cucamonga because that's where the base for his business is. So that's one of the, that's one of the things that I would definitely work with groups such as the Chamber of Commerce and work with the city so that we have a streamlined process when it comes to doing this license and permits. And we really need to have a, a council that has the intentions to do so. You know, it's complicated. Sometimes the businesses in order to open up and get off the ground, they have to hire a consultant. If the process is so complicated that you have to go and hire a consultant, no, that's a problem. It should be pretty straightforward. If I want to open a business in Rancho, I should be able to go down to the, to the city hall and pull all the paperwork that I need, fill out, and turn it back in, right? So that's one of the things that I really want to focus on. It's streamlining the processes, make sure that it's easy, make sure that any, any person who has a dream, any, any entrepreneur that wants to come into City Ranch Cucamonga and open a business, it's able to do so without any hassle. Thank you.
Mr. Steinhardt, do you need me to repeat the question? Okay. "How would you, as a city council member, work to improve the city's services and processes for new and existing businesses?"
Okay, thank you. We're going to hear the same answer to this question probably for almost every question that's going to be asked of us. There were some questions that were sent to us in advance, and pretty much all of them have remnants of this answer. We need to make city hall easier to work with, just in general. I, I've been in business 15 years. I had my business in Rancho. We moved our business to Upland, and we recently moved our business back to Rancho. Now, when I had my business in Upland to get a business license, it was a form and $75 check, and I was done. When I came to Rancho and we reopened here in April, it, it took me near part, better part of a day to be able to get that business license, and it was me that had to do it as a business owner. It was not something I could delegate to one of my staffers or to someone else to fill out that form. And I have to tell you, I, I'm pretty smart when it comes to numbers, and when I came to that cashier's office, I was wrong as far as what the amount of money that I owed for that business license was. So it was a new form that had been recently introduced. I, I do believe that those types of elements are just a small part of what makes it challenging to do business here. I'm, I'm not going to criticize the city because we know that we have a great workforce. We have an excellent infrastructure. We have homes that are open for people to be able to purchase. We have openness. We have a lot of great things that we want, and that's the reason why people want to do business in Rancho. What, as a council member, I would do is just work with staff, work with the businesses, and really advocate why it makes sense for them to bring their businesses to Ranch Cucamonga, and then to expand their businesses once they are here. Because that's one of the greater things that we're not talking about, is what it takes for the businesses that are here, that are already committed to our city, what necessary hurdles they have to jump through to go ahead and increase their distribution plans, or increase their facilities, or add a patio cover. As you mentioned, hiring consultants to be able to do that. Other cities, it's not necessary. I mean, maybe the city of LA, but, I mean, come on, guys, we're not LA. We're Ranch Cucamonga. We can do it better than that. Thank you.
Mr. Rice, do you need me to repeat the question?
No, it's, no.
Okay.
Okay. So I was actually an intern for the city of Fontana Planning Department for a year and seven months. So there I learned of the inner workings of city government. I, I even myself processed signed permits for, as an intern for a lot of the city projects there. I processed over 120 signed permits while I worked there. So I, I know the inner workings of city government. I know what type of regulations that they have that can be relaxed so that it's a better business environment for a lot of different businesses. But my, my huge, the platform I'm running on is limited government, individual rights, and free enterprise. And I think that, that this question, I mean, it beg, it definitely begs that, that type of, to have that type of position on, on, for businesses. We need limited government and more free enterprise to turn the city, city's ills around. When I was working in the city of Fontana, I noticed that there was a huge, there was a lot of different processes you had to go through to get a project dealt with. So I would definitely look at different processes in the city of Fontana. I know I'm not as familiar with what the city of Fontana does, or Ranch Cucamonga does as far as the development advisory boards and certain other groups that have, that you have to go through to get a permit processed or anything like that. But that's, that's really what the, the platform that I run, running on is limited government and free enterprise. Thank you.
You know, it's, it's difficult, and I appreciate, you know, people's, you know, well-intentioned that want to come in and fix all these ills or challenges or issues that are going on for our business community and what the city's doing. You know, I appreciate all that, but, you know, with all due respect, you got to have an understanding of exactly what it is as to how the operations are and what the requirements are, and the standards and the history of the city. In order to be able to deal with things going forward, you have to understand the past as to how we got to this point, where we are currently, and where we need to go in the future. I've been back on the city council for the last two years. I championed the comprehensive update of our city's development code, okay? That frankly is, is probably the most business-friendly document around. We don't need to go to another neighboring city and look at what they're doing. Ranch Cucamonga has earned a reputation as a city of vision, and it was because of people, and I served on the council from 82 through 94, that we're looking forward, wanting to be business-friendly, wanting to have a beautiful community so that all these young men could move here and be excited about being here in Ranch Cucamonga. And I think that it's great. Also, too, we have restructured our city operations, okay, in staffing to be efficient and cost-effective while improving customer service. You know, I think it's really important that we not overlook the fact that in order to be effective on the council and be able to really get the job done, you need experience, and these are not times where we need to have people coming in, trying to find their way around city hall, and trying to find things to fix that aren't broken. Thank you.
Mr. Moffett, do you need me to repeat the question?
I have a lot of friends that are in retail and in restaurant business, and this city is not business-friendly today. When you go in and you want to get a permit, like Mark said, it takes all day long. It's easy to sit up here and say, "Oh, we're so easy. If we are so easy, why are not more businesses coming to Ranch Cucamonga instead of moving out?" We've got to look at the whole picture and see what is the problem? Why are we not so business-friendly? Why we have so many empty buildings? Why do people want to move to neighboring cities? That's the question. It's easy to sit up here and say, "Oh, we're friendly. We're the greatest." Well, we are not. So we've got to be honest with ourselves and take a look at the ordinances and the challenges we have in the future. Thank you.
Could you read the question for me again, please?
"How would you, as a city council member, work to improve the city's services and processes to new and existing businesses?"
Well, you, two, two issues here. You've got new businesses that are coming in, like Chuck was talking about. We've just gone through a process of, of making our development code and easier for the consumer coming into the city hall when it starts at the desk. So this city is based on quality and quantity, and I don't see anybody leaving the city, but I see businesses coming into the city because it is a premier city to, to do your business in. Existing businesses, how do we, well, I step back a pers, a step. When a new business comes in, you'll find that the city council, and me in particular, will be at every ribbon-cutting ceremony with the chamber, letting that business know exactly how we feel about them coming into our community. Let them know how active the chamber is with the city and how active the city is with the chamber, so that when issues come up that a business has to deal with, they know where to go and what to do to, to resolve it. Existing businesses are here and thrive. The city would not be as good as it is if it wasn't for the businesses that are in it. So we have worked on streamlining the process. With the downturn in the economy, it's allowed the city to take a step back and look at the process that we've used in the past to make it a lot easier for businesses to come in, get their application, and go through the process. In some regards, where you have big projects that are going to take more than one process at the city, we've, we've set it up where you have one person, that's your contact person. So we have done a lot of strides in making it a lot easier for everybody.
Our next question will begin with Mr. Steinhardt. This question number, number 10 in the questions that, okay. "Sometimes complaints are made about city's sign ordinances. Does the city's present sign ordinance need to be revised or updated to reflect the changes in the economy?"
Well, that's a great question, and we've heard this actually discussed quite a bit. You know, it was, it was really funny. Right after the last election cycle, Mark from Hopper's Furniture came to city council, and he took a, a whole bunch of slides that he showed of all of us electeds that, that wanted to get out there and put our signs, that were everywhere. And as you can go outside, you can see them, they're everywhere. I mean, you can't miss them. Now tell me, why is it that we have signs out there? We want you to buy a commodity by investing in us. Well, poor Mark at Hopper's, you drive up Rochester, he gets a hard time just to put an A-frame outside of his business. You can't see his business based on the way that the landscaping is, and you look at some of these restaurants where on the west side, they're only allowed to have one sign. You go to the east side, next to Victoria Gardens, my family would like to call it Vicky G's. You go next to Vicky G's, and, you know, two, three sides of the building have signs. We all understand that signage is extremely important. Now mind you, we don't want blight. We want our city to look beautiful. We understand that. But we all know that you will not find a business that's been advertised, that you found online, that you found the address for, that you're driving to to go see, unless you can see a sign where that business actually is. And then for a, a business to be successful, for them to be able to follow up with an offer, perhaps a call to action, a reason to come into their business, a banner that displays a special price or a special promotion that they're having to try and boost the month-end sales or the year-end sales, those are all reasonable things for businesses to have to do. For our city to restrict that restricts growth. And we all know that this city is really dependent on sales tax revenue, so it just doesn't seem to make sense. To answer your question, absolutely, we could really help the businesses locally, and with that, I'll let my 15 seconds go. Thank you.
Mr. Rice, this next question for you is number 15 in the questions that were sent. "Are there areas of public safety needed to be improved? In your opinion, has the city budgeted appropriately for public safety needs?"
Well, actually, that's a good time to ask that question because earlier today, I was shopping at Trader Joe's with my son, and I saw some guy looking inside a car, and there was a dog in the car. He decided to call the police to let them know that there was a dog in the car. Animal Services van showed up, as well as two police cruisers for a dog in a car. So I don't know if the city has appropriately budgeted for public safety, but I do know that if we ever get into a position where we're paying our past public employees more than we're paying our current ones, that's definitely going to affect public safety. So the economy is a big, huge issue that affects public safety. It's not just the amount of money that goes towards public safety. I do think that it can be looked at and adjusted, but I, but I still do, I do think that the current sheriff does a good job in this city, so, thank you.
Mr. Bouquet, this is question number 12. "What is your vision five years out in the community's economic development?"
Five years out, gee, this is right up my alley relative to the vision thing, which, like I said, has attracted a lot of the people that live here in this community and the businesses that are here and thriving in this community. You know, it's really important that you look forward to what it is that could potentially change relative to demands and needs in the community, especially within the business sectors. I mean, I remember at one time when this city prohibited any building that was over 50,000 square feet for any type of a warehouse use. And look, and I was one of the people, actually, the champion changing that to afford the flexibility for a lot of the businesses that you see here now, and they're creating a lot of jobs. We need to be looking forward relative to maintaining the services that we need to maintain for our residents and for our businesses. And it's a case of where economic development is really, to me, is the key, is, is you've got to live within your means. You need to project out what it's going to cost you to operate as a city, and you have to have a realistic plan to be able to cover those expenses and carefully consider new improvements that you're doing, or expansions that you're doing as to what it's going to cost you down the road. We've restructured our staffing. A lot of our key staff that were working in economic development are working in key positions and departments promoting economic, economic development. I want all of our employees to be economic development representatives. We have a new municipal utility incentive for existing businesses, and new businesses coming to, to town give them a reduced electricity rate. We've got new businesses. IEHP has relocated to Ranch Cucamonga, 700 new jobs. Nongshim is doing an expansion that's going to result in 160 new jobs. I'm thinking of others that I'm probably forgetting, but the, the news is good on the Ranch Cucamonga front as to economic development. We just need to keep doing the right things, having the right people, making the right decisions for the right reasons, and I plan to be there and continue that service for you.
Mr. Moffett, this is actually from question number one. "What experience do you feel is necessary to be an effective member of the city council?"
Well, number, number one, let me start off with saying, I never did get a copy of the questions, but that's okay.
I apologize for that.
Number two, if you want a successful business in Ranch Cucamonga, you get Sam at the grand opening, take a picture, and he will do it for you. But now would you repeat the question?
Yes, sir. "What experience do you feel is necessary to be an effective member of the city council?"
What do I feel? Number one, honesty and integrity, and that do not demean the people in the city. You cannot stand up there and, and sit there and say, and look down at people who come to speak and say, "You people are only here to be on TV." That's a statement by one of our, our elected, our appointed councilmen. And I think that when the people get, come and they have concerns and issues, to listen to them and seek out an answer. They don't, you don't always have to agree, but you have to listen and you have to have an answer one way or another. Right or wrong, you must take care of the citizens in Ranch Cucamonga and not demean their character and make them feel like second-class citizens. their character and make them feel like second-class citizens. Thank you.
Mr. Spagnolo, this comes from question number three. Do you support higher fees and/or taxes on our businesses?
Well, I want to thank Mr. Moffett for giving me a plug there. On that issue there, no, I don't support new taxes or higher fees. But I think that any new development that comes into the city should pay its own way so it doesn't become a burden on the existing businesses or people in the community.
And Mr. Jimenez, what, this is question number six. What are your views in regards to the city of Rancho Cucamonga spending money on the relocation of business to the city of Rancho Cucamonga?
Well, you know, we have a huge task in front of us, not just as citizens of Rancho Cucamonga or as Californians or mainly as Americans. We need to rebuild our economy, and it starts here at home. And when you talk about building, you know, relocating businesses into Rancho Cucamonga, it's a good thing as long as they're job-creating businesses. We shouldn't be using taxpayer dollars just to enrich somebody. So, if we are going to use a taxpayer dollars to relocate a business or move it around the city or move it into the city, it has to be a business that's going to create jobs, and not just any type of jobs. We have a lot of retail. We have a lot of warehouses in the south side of the city. We need manufacturing jobs. We need jobs that someone can make a living and someone that someone can actually raise a family on. I think we have a huge task in front of us, and we need a council that actually recognizes the needs of the working people and the things that we can do when we use the taxpayer dollars to do businesses. Like I said, not just to, not just to make a business richer, but actually to encourage a business that's actually going to create jobs that are going to help the people of Rancho Cucamonga.
Mr. Steinert, back to you. This is number 17. How would you improve the relations with the city and the business owners?
Communication. I think this might be close enough. I think it's been touched on a little bit here. Openness, transparency, accessibility. Those are the three cornerstones of what I feel is a successful council member's job. One of the biggest deals with businesses, of course, is to go there at the ribbon-cutting, and I applaud Mr. Spagnolo for that. And also, to be able to have the vision, and I applaud Mr. Bouquet for that. But it also is really important for us to make sure that that business is doing well throughout the whole time that they're in business. And as a council member, you need to really make sure that you're out there, you're seen in the public, you're advocating for Rancho Cucamonga, not necessarily for one particular business, but for all of the businesses in Rancho Cucamonga. One of the things that we heard in one of the previous debates was about marketing the county or the assembly district, but frankly, we really need to be marketing the city. We have an infrastructure that's just second to none. We have an educated workforce. We have, we have homes. We have people that need jobs. We have everything that is necessary. The only thing we need to do to add to this, you know, the old phrase, add water. No, add jobs! And the best way for us to do that is to go out to Orange County, go out to LA County, where they do have more burdensome relations or restrictions, and make an advocacy about why it's best to bring those businesses to Rancho Cucamonga. It isn't that hard to do. Mr. Bouquet referenced IEHP that left San Bernardino because of the bankruptcy and decided to come to Rancho Cucamonga. That's great. But you know what? It would have been great if they'd come here because of another reason besides the bankruptcy. I think that that's the type of advocacy that council members need to be doing and going out there and basically being the chief salesperson. I understand we had an RDA redevelopment agency for a long time, that that was their core responsibility. Folks, we know what's happened there. So, now it really behooves the council members to make this one of their responsibilities and to take that on as a challenge and not make this just a part-time first and third Wednesday job. Make this something that you actually care about and you take to the streets and you take to the other cities and counties, and you bring the businesses home.
And Mr. Rice, this is, comes from question number two. What are your plans to help existing manufacturers to stay, expand, and contribute to the successes of our local community services?
Okay, well, restating my limited government, free-market position, I believe a company's success really should really depend on free-market circumstances. Laissez-faire supply and demand should be the only factor that helps a manufacturer stay or expand their business. Therefore, I would determine the areas of the city code that hinders the success of manufacturers and work to repeal those ordinances, such as certain zoning ordinances that inhibit innovation. As far as helping manufacturers contribute to local community service, I would help sponsor certain local events that market and advertise the community services well and simply ask for contributions. I don't think a manufacturer, though, should get any type of kickback for contributing to community services.
And Mr. Bouquet, this is question number seven. In your opinion, what areas of the city's operating or operational expenses need to be adjusted, reduced, or eliminated?
That's actually a very good question. You know, I'm proud to say that the last two years following my return to city council, Rancho Cucamonga has adopted a balanced budget without use of reserves. I also want to tell you that I'm proud of the fact that, you know, pension reform that I pushed back in 1994 when I was in the council before resulted in over a saving, in a savings over $1 million a year for taxpayers. That was as a result of going through and looking at operations and looking at what were the right things to do and the things that needed to be adjusted. You know, it's a case of where we have services that we're performing now. We're working on a Haven median retrofit project that was a water-guzzling project. We've got trees that were diseased as a result of that. I was encouraging my council colleagues the last two years to go through and deal with that, as we need to do a lot of our landscape maintenance districts throughout the city and start going through and putting in smart landscaping and biting the bullet and going through and doing what we need to do for long-term fiscal and environmental responsibility. I mean, that is going to be the challenge. To me, that is the big issue the next four years and the next 40 years. Cities get themselves in trouble because the fact is they always think that money's always going to be coming in. The good news in Rancho Cucamonga, I'm proud to tell you, because of our fiscal prudence, Sam and I have worked very closely on this the last two years as well. We have enough money sitting in reserve at this point in time that if all the money stopped coming in from Vicky G or whatever it was that Mark called it, which is one of our top sales producers, number-one Apple store in the country, is located here in Rancho Cucamonga at Victoria Gardens, we have enough money to operate for a full year without you even noticing that no money has been coming into the city. I think that that speaks volume to the, to the experience, the fiscal visioning, and people going through, making adjustments in our city operations, and not saying things that come up during election cycle just because it's convenient and sounds great, but have actually been working on those things to be part of the solution and actually getting things done.
And Mr. Moffett, have you and how have you been involved or experienced the business community outreach alongside the Chamber of Commerce?
Say that again, please.
How have you been involved or experienced the business community outreach alongside the Chamber of Commerce, such as ribbon-cutting ceremonies, grand openings, or other functions?
Well, I've been involved in the business in Rancho Cucamonga for 30 years, and I've been successful, so I must be doing something right. Far as the chamber, I dropped out of the chamber for reasons that I shall remain to myself. And I think that it's easy for people to say of all the businesses that came in, but why don't we mention all the ones that went out? That makes us even. Hungry Howie's is out. Osh is out. The market on 19th and Cornelian is gone. The Albertson Market on Foothill in Archibald is gone. We have lost just as many businesses as we have taken in. And the Apple place at Victoria Gardens is great, and everybody talks about it, but what was in before that? There was a business in there before. So, if one leaves and one comes in, we haven't gained anything. And I think this is what we have to look at. Start looking at the empty buildings and why are these people leaving? Thank you.
Mr. Spagnolo, what are your plans to help the small businesses grow and stay in Rancho Cucamonga? This is question number four.
Which one is that?
This is number four. What are your plans to help the small businesses grow and stay in Rancho Cucamonga?
Okay. You should have gave me the one that you gave to Jim.
I think we already heard that one.
The one I've been criticized for doing, but I think it's important that we listen to the community and listen to our businesses, that having an open door allows us to do that. Identifying barriers that are preventing businesses from thriving, trying to identify how to make the process a lot smoother for them, and removing the identity solutions and alternatives. What we've been doing is continuing to revive our city ordinance and codes where feasible without jeopardizing our quality that we so hard to work for in our, in our city, and to work with our partners. And again, I go back to the chamber because the chamber is the voice of the businesses. And if you don't have a relationship with your chamber, you're not going to have a relationship with your business. I know cutting ribbons and taking pictures isn't always everything that people think it is, but it has a big impact on that business. When a business sees their chamber there and they see the city council there, they know that we care about their success. And without their success, we wouldn't have a good chamber like we do have now. So, reinventing the city's economic development program to try to provide a one-stop resource and reach out affirmatively to small businesses using as many channels as possible.
Similar question, Mr. Jimenez. This is number 19. Rancho Cucamonga is sometimes criticized for being a tough place to do business in. In this especially bad economy, what will you do to help local businesses to prosper?
You know, we all touched on that earlier, but one of the things that we definitely can do is cutting the cost of doing business in Rancho. Because of AB 32, and those of you who are not familiar with AB 32, it was an assembly bill that was passed that, you know, enhances the quality of our environment, but one of the things that it does, it required, it required businesses to recycle also. You know, we have recycling at home, but businesses have to recycle also. Well, you know, when we have one trash provider, one waste management company in the city, I bet you the prices are not going to be as low as we could have it if we have multiple waste management providers in the city. One of the things that I will definitely try to do as a council member will be to open the market and bring other waste management companies into the city. And guess what? As soon as you're in competition, I bet you the prices are going to go down and the cost of business will definitely go down. We have to look at those options. That's just one example. There's many that we can do. And that's one of the things that we can do.
Well, that concludes the question and answer portion. We're going to move into our two-minute closing remarks. The way this will occur is I have each of your names on a slip of paper, so it'll be done by random drawing. So, the first for the two-minute closing is Mr. Bouquet.
Thank you. I've been quite busy the past two years working on your behalf following my return to city council. With my counsel and business owner experience, we've accomplished a great deal to ensure Rancho Cucamonga remains the best place to live, work, and raise a family. We have maintained public safety as our top priority for our families and businesses. We've adopted a balanced budget these past two years without use of reserves. We've adopted comprehensive pension and benefits reform for all of our labor groups in the city. We've restructured our city operations and staffing to be efficient and cost-effective while improving customer service. We've adopted a business-friendly, comprehensive update of our development code. We've completed the Pacific Electric Trail across our entire city. We've nearly completed the Freedom Courtyard Veterans Reflectionary at Central Park. Ladies and gentlemen, challenging economic times dictate the need to elect council members having proven experience and ability to properly manage our city's finances. This is essential for Rancho Cucamonga's long-term economic vitality and ensuring the highest possible quality of life for Rancho Cucamonga. Working together, we will continue to become the city that other cities dream about, where we control our own destiny through financial independence, economic stability, and a powerful sense of community. As I said before, I've been committed to making a better Rancho Cucamonga for over 30 years in the wide range of things that I've been involved in. And a lot of you know me from all of those different things. I plan to continue that commitment to this community that I love and have grown up in and has been part of my life and welcomed and embraced new people moving here and businesses moving here. And I'm going to do everything I can to make sure it continues to prosper. And with your vote, I'm not done yet, and thank you for your consideration.
Next, Mr. Steinert.
Oh, great. Thank you. Well, again, I want to thank the chamber for hosting this event. I think it's very important that the business community really has an opportunity to listen and understand what the candidate's experience level is, where their heart is, get an understanding of what their future goals would be. I own a small business that, my whole business is growing small businesses. It's a marketing firm. And, you know, when we talk about businesses that have gone out of business or businesses that are struggling, I'm right there, knee-deep with them, to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that they're as successful as possible. We have a phrase in our business. We like to send the right message to the right people at the right time. Now, it seems simple. The right message, well, folks, it's time to focus back on business in this council. The right people, it's out here in this audience. It's our electorate. It's our city. It's the right time? The time is now. We're looking at a situation where, I appreciate Mr. Bouquet's efforts over the last two years to be able to bring a balanced budget to our city, but I remember in the last election cycle, we were, we were told we had a balanced budget in our city as well. They just forgot to add that part without dipping into reserves. Now, it's great that we've stopped the dipping into reserves. I really, really do appreciate that for the future of my family, but, you know, as business people, we understand that you can't really call it a balanced budget if you're dipping into reserves at all. That's called going out of business. It's just a slower way of doing it. So, what I would ask is, this is a great opportunity. We have people here now that are looking to help lead this city, and it is a sacrifice, folks. Running a business is so much easier than sitting up here and taking questions. It's a challenge, but it's something that my family has given me the ability to do, and I really just, from the bottom of my heart, really wish that I ask for your vote and your support come November 6th. Thank you.
Mr. Jimenez.
I just want to thank you guys. I know you guys think too much, but you can never thank somebody enough, right? Look, like I mentioned in my opening statement, I grew up in the city. I love the city. I am, you know, getting ready, we're actually expecting our first baby, so I'm getting ready to raise a kid in this community. I wouldn't be willing to run for city council if I didn't believe in this community. I've seen it blossom from, I still remember the orange groves and lemon groves and grapevines. I remember playing in them. The city has transformed and is growing, and it's going to grow, it's going to change. Demographics are going to change. Our economy is going to change. We've got to make sure that we are ready for those, for the challenges. Some of these folks up here, you know, reminisce about the past. When you vote for somebody for elected office, choose somebody who's looking to the future, not reminiscing about the past. I reminisce about the past in my personal experience, and I love it, but we have to be ready for the challenges of the 21st century. We've got to work together, guys. We have tremendous challenges in our country, in our state, in our city. You have to be, you have to have someone who actually acknowledges those challenges and is willing to tackle them on and tackle those hard issues. We have currently the, we have currently a balanced budget, but we cannot allow ourselves to become San Bernardino. We need to look into pension reform. I know it's tough. I know both are, both branches over as public safety are not willing to talk about that, but we need to do that. It's kind of tough when you have three elected officials who are former of public safety, and when you have two other ones who are participating in the public pension system, getting full-time benefits for a part-time job. You need someone who's going to take control of the city, who's actually going to be willing to ask those tough questions and make those hard decisions and look into the future. My name is Sarah Jimenez. Vote for me for city council. Thank you.
Mr. Moffett.
I think that we've got to look at the whole picture. If I was elected councilman, I would continue doing what I'm doing. I would support the veterans. I would also support our schools, our students, our soccer, football teams, and all sports groups. This is extremely important. Yes, we have a veterans courtyard going to be done this year. Mr. Bouquet, I'm sorry to say, wasn't here when we started it, but he brought it up. So, it's easy to bring things up after the fact. If you remember, some of you folks here, they wanted to put a bocce ball court in. And I was the one, along with Bill Hanlon, and said, why don't we put in a veterans memorial? And before that, I was active, very active in getting the banner system to where it is today. A lot of people do take credit for things they didn't do. That's fine, and it's easy to pass out innuendos. I do not run around blowing I do not run around blowing my horn, but if somebody says something and tries to take credit for something that they didn't do, I get a little upset. I think that this is the finest city, and I would be an honor to serve you because I am one of you. I have lived here 40 years, and I have lived here 40 years in the same house, so that means I must like it here. Thank you.
Ms. Rice.
All right. I wanted to reply to something that Mr. Bouquet said about trying to find things that don't, that need to be fixed that don't exist. When the development code is this thick printed out, and the sign code alone is 30 pages long, the process is definitely not business-friendly enough, at least to me. And I read the sign code earlier this week, and it's definitely not business-friendly enough. But I wanted to say again, I'm running for city council because I care about the future and prosperity and success of the city. But I'm, I'm also tired of the same old politics that occurs in the city and all across the country. In fact, I'm a little bit angry about it. I'm angry about the direction in which this country is headed, and I see this city heading in that same direction. I've heard over and over again from city officials, including current city council members, that Rancho is a city that others want to emulate, but that's not the case. Instead, our city is emulating others. Last year, the city council and mayor unanimously passed Ordinance 849, which requires a permit for a peaceful assembly of people. Many city officials I spoke with use the classic excuse that other cities are doing it, so we might as well too. I was a main opponent to Ordinance 849. Mine and other, others' activism helped influence the council to amend Ordinance 849 to Ordinance 851, which essentially changed nothing whatsoever besides the number of people who are allowed at the assembly. They thought the slight changes might silence the opponents of the ordinance, but instead we've become louder. I also see the city receiving all these federal grants that have way too many strings attached. For example, the city is in the process of installing a video surveillance system throughout the city. When I first heard of this news, I decided to meet with someone at the city about this surveillance system. I learned that a federal grant is helping pay for the system, which I'm fundamentally opposed to for civil liberty reasons. What I see is Rancho becoming more and more like other cities around it. As your councilman, I will make, I will make this city one that others would truly want to emulate, and I ask that you please support my candidacy and vote for me on November 6th.
Ms. Spagnolo.
Thank you very much. It has been my honor to serve you on the city council. I remain committed to protection and improving the quality of life in our community. Vision and leadership combined with intelligent planning have been the hallmark of our community. During the past four years, we have implemented fair pension reform, made sensible staff and salary reductions, and restructured our organization to improve efficiency, save money, and maintain a high standard of public service. Fiscal responsibility and a high standard of living will remain a top priority during my next term. We are faced with many challenges, an uncertain economy, rising crime, reduced property values, and confusion in our state and federal government. Now more than ever, experienced leadership must be maintained in Rancho Cucamonga. I pledge to continue my work towards public safety, strengthening our police, fire, and emergency medical services without raising taxes. Economic development, support policies that strengthen local businesses and protect our property values. Safe zones, create and maintain safe zones for our children around schools and parks, and improve our senior transportation. Please vote, Sam Spagnolo. Thank you very much.
That concludes our candidates form for our city council candidates, sponsored by Rancho Cucamonga Chamber of Commerce in Southern California. I want to thank each of our candidates for participating and attending. Thank you very much.
March.
........................................................................................................................................................................